I call to order the Gladstone City Council Meeting for December 12th, 2017 at 6:35 PM. So hello everyone, happy Hanukkah, happy National Gingerbread House Day. And there's also a wonderful holiday called Bonza Butler Day, which is Australian, and it gives you a holiday every single month, so I think we should adopt that one. We have quite a bit on our agenda tonight, so first on the consent agenda is approval of the November 14th, 2017 minutes, approval of the monthly financial reports, approval of the November check register and bank balances, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for November 2017, resolution number 1126, which is to amend workers' compensation coverage for volunteers. Then this is followed up by our regular agenda, which is the presentation to retired police officer Bob Maple of his retirement badge, Metro presentation by Councillor Carlotta Colette, presentation of the fire department coverage standards, appointment to city boards, committees, and commissions, discussion and potential action regarding resolution number 1127 to declare certain city properties as surplus, proposed election-related amendments to the city charter, and request to review city attorney invoices. Tammy, could you please call the roll? Councillor Milch?
Here.
Councillor Neese?
Here.
Councillor Tracy?
Present.
Councillor Reisner?
Here.
Councillor McMahon?
Here.
Councillor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stempel?
Here.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any agenda additions or corrections?
I have none, Madam Mayor.
All right, so the first thing is the introduction of a few new city employees. Staff?
I'll do it this way if that's okay. Tom O'Connor, Fire Chief, City of Gladstone, and I am proud to introduce someone many of you already know, Captain Richard Newton. Richard has been with Gladstone Fire and volunteer part-time and paid-on call capacity for over 30 years.
Yikes.
So he kept at it.
[laughing]
And he's going to have to deliver a seminar at the next fire service convention about how the easy way to get hired in the fire department is to be a chief. He's risen up through the ranks all the way to battalion chief and now is a full-time captain. I'm thrilled to have you on board. Richard Newton.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Maureen, interim library director, and this is Bonnie Exby, our new volunteer coordinator. So she has already worked for us on call for over three years, so she knows everyone and can really hit the ground running. She's also worked at the Oregon City Library for over 18 years, so lots of library experience. She's also been a teacher and a school librarian for 15 years, so tons of experience to know their own library more than you have her. Bonnie Exby.
Well, before we proceed with the regular agenda and the consent agenda, I'd like to say a few words regarding the city council. I know, well, actually, I'll wait and do this until after business from the audience. Okay, so business from the audience, we have multiple agenda items, and as I already announced, please make sure if you're going to speak that you note on the yellow card when you're going to speak. So Tammy, who do we have first?
Bill Osborne.
What you guys are getting there is a table I've been putting together. I talked to some of you about the penalties on the park rules and how I thought they were excessive. And this is a comparison to some of the surrounding areas. Now, I'm still looking to get a few of these on here. And in Oregon City, I will add that I do know that there are some things that do constitute what seems to be a Class C misdemeanor with a maximum $500 penalty. I'm not sure what those are. I believe they may be the alcohol consumption. But as you can see with some of the items here, I just, I broke it down to five items just for comparison. So Clackamas County, parking in the wrong area, you have a $34 fine. West Lynn, Oregon City, Milwaukee, they're all normal parking violations where we've turned into a Class C crime. Not picking up after your dog when it makes a mess. Again, 30 days in jail or a $1,250 fine here, $55 fine if you're in a North Clackamas Park. I believe West Lynn is the $1,000 maximum fine. Oregon City's a $300 fine. Milwaukee, $500, and Portland, the first time it's $50, and $150 after that. And then, you see, I put a few more on there, so I don't mean to keep going on and on about this, but the squeaky wheel always gives the grease, so I'm just trying to give you guys more information to back up what I said. Other questions I have, and I don't know if the attorney has looked at these or not, but maybe he could answer if it's legal to criminalize minor traffic infractions, because the new park rules turn any traffic infractions into a Class C misdemeanor or parking violations.
You know, it's not within what I do. I don't have a ready answer for you on that question.
Okay, maybe you could look into that.
It's something that I would take direction from the council on if they want me to.
Okay. Well, I guess I would ask the council, ask the attorney to look these over a little more too, please. Compare them with our neighbors in the surrounding area. Just want to make sure that we're not the iron fist of Oregon, which right at this time it seems that we are. And although most of the rules that are in the park thing I agree with, and I want to make that clear, I'm not disagreeing with the new rules that the Parks and Rec Board came up with. I think most of them are pretty common sense. It's just the penalty part of it. I believe the penalty is a little excessive. It also puts more of a financial burden on the city because a misdemeanor crime, a person is entitled to an attorney at the state's expense if they can't afford one. They'll also generally make at least three court appearances, where if we reduce it to a fine, we can still give somebody a fine if they do something wrong. At the same time, we're not giving them an attorney, and we're not seeing multiple court trips, so, again, if you guys could look into that a little bit more, I'd appreciate it, and as I get more information, I'll pass it on to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Next.
Frank Hernandez.
I am here to voice my concern and implore you to reconsider the new laws that were passed at the November 14th city council meeting. These laws include, but are not limited to, length of dog leash, park violations, parking violations, dog and vehicle volume, volume of time to remove graffiti. For 30 years, I was responsible for reviewing and developing agency policy. In most of these years, I was fortunate to partner with a school resource officer so the policies were required to be consistent with community law. For this reason, I began a partnership with the University of Oregon Law School. My SRO and I would attend legal workshops and private meetings to ensure our policies were legally compliant and with the most effective element and application. If you ask any administrator responsible for compliance or any lawyer with a basic knowledge of law, they will tell you when creating a policy or law, there are three questions you must answer to avoid legal action. These legal actions could include lawsuits, profiling complaints, or appearance of discrimination. And with recent statements by Councillor Milch acknowledging the possibility of race playing a role in decisions, it led me once questioning gender discrimination, the commission should make every effort to avoid the appearance, or in this case, the precedent of further discriminatory policy actions. The three guiding questions that every policy should be vetted are, first, do you have one? You cannot enforce a policy if you do not have one and have made every effort to ensure that new policies are public knowledge. Second, is it reasonable? Is the language understandable? Is there specific criteria for enforcement? And are the consequences just or punitive? And third, do you apply it consistently? In the article by Bill Osborne that prompted this response, he states that he was told, "Well, we are really not going to be citing people for these issues." To have a law that is intended for application for a particular cohort is the essence of discrimination. Being from a minority cohort and having faced a lifetime of discriminatory policies, again, I implore you to vet these laws through legal counsel, and if the legal counsel does not give you pause, I would recommend the council attain a second opinion. I bring these concerns forward not to criticize, but to ensure the town of Gladstone, where my family has chosen to live, does not become known as Badstone, the town where you don't want to be if you are not the right type of person. Don't let fear and intolerance become the legal rule of order. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you. Patrick Mathis.
You all know how much I love doing this. Your Gladstone councilors, how many people here tonight have forgotten what day of what year they were born? I'm here tonight not because I want to be, I'm here because three councilors violated open meetings laws and made me feel embarrassed for and of my city. In fact, I would have never started this journey had they not. I wouldn't have had to. To be honest, I decided enough was enough when Frank Hernandez was the victim of Linda Neese, Tom Mercero, and Pat McMahon. It has been said that I have been focusing on Linda Neese because she's a woman. She has even had political allies suggest that I made her afraid to be alone outside of her home. Ms. Neese perpetually portrays herself as a victim. It is a fact, though, that Linda Neese reached out to me, and we had a conversation after I suggested that maybe we need another recall. Over time, I learned that Ms. Neese lied to me multiple times. Intentionally, I never had another conversation with Ms. Neese, but I did start looking into her at many levels. Many people who have had past dealings with her are unwilling to come forward and speak of what she's done to them. I initiated complaints to many government agencies, including our city, not just about Ms. Neese, but also Mercero and McMahon. Two of these complaints were about potential voter fraud committed by Ms. Neese to the Secretary of State and the Clackamas County Clerk. I have heard, though, through many members of our community, that Ms. Neese has been very recently giving speeches, writing letters, and even wrote an op-ed piece in the Clackamas Review in which she gives a myriad of excuses for mistakes, and that their investigations found her innocent. The truth is that Linda registered to vote using multiple birth dates of 1946, 1948, and 1950. The truth is Linda received and cast seven ballots from Oregon City while living in Gladstone that may have had measures or candidates on them for which she was not allowed to vote. The truth is that Linda Neese tried to get the case dismissed. The truth is that each separate occurrence could have been a felony with a fine and jail time, but for one fact, the statute of limitations is three years and has expired. So she was not innocent, she was just not prosecutable at this time. I'm providing the entire case file from the Secretary of State obtained through FOIA to the council and to the public, and I ask that it be included in its entirety in the next council packet in minutes. It is also available to anybody who requests it in zip files at gladstonewatch@gmail.com. The case file contains many details, and I believe it is important that Gladstone knows who is representing us. The right to vote in our country is sacrosanct. No public official should abuse that right in any way and be making excuses. They simply should not be in a position to place rules over us. They should be ashamed. I have paper copies, if anybody here would like one.
Thank you, Patrick. Next.
John Person.
John Person's here to talk about the business license fees that seem to be a little excessive for my taste, and I think for a lot of business owners in town. I'm currently paying, what they want me to pay is $500 for business license, and it seems like they want to chase business out of Gladstone, not bring business into Gladstone. At the same time, when you're trying to revitalize the downtown, I'd really like you guys to vote on that again and have a maximum. No one should have to pay $500. If something doesn't change, I'll be having a fire sale on 16 Gladstone properties in the next two weeks. So I've been waiting two years for something to happen. Nothing happens. Lot of talk, a lot of people say that it's wrong, but nothing happens. So I'll miss you guys.
Mr. Person, for clarification, do you own then one business or several businesses? Are you being charged for each property?
I don't own any business in Gladstone. I'm a landlord.
Okay.
Landlord since 1987, spent 27 years with zero business license fee, zero to 500. Try to keep my rents as low as possible. Have tenants that spent 10, 20 years with me. Can't do it anymore. I'm going to sell them. I'm going to miss you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Linda, do you have his contact information?
I don't, but I'll get it.
John, could you make sure Linda has your contact information?
I would appreciate it, because that's something we are working on, okay?
I would urge you to.
I know.
Thank you.
You, John.
Next.
Susan Liston.
Mayor Stempel and councilors, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Knowing you are overwhelmed with master plans, agendas, and meetings, please take into consideration the following. It was last Friday, December 5, when I became aware that the DTR, Downtown Revitalization Plan, might go before planning in January. Through emails, I found out the DTR will, in fact, go to planning one week from today for recommendation to city council. Since I was assured no codes would be changed at this meeting, and there would be multiple steps in the process for citizen input, I only requested a more resident-friendly product. Today, I believe, I learned that if citizens wish to address the DTR at any time in the future, they must either speak at planning next week, or write a letter or email to Jackie Betts prior to 5:00 PM next Tuesday. The DTR is 200-plus pages. I've just started to wade through it. So far, I found a few errors in the possibility that building projects in Gladstone may no longer need to go before planning, recommended changes to current parking codes and building codes, as well as other items, only skimming the surface, a lot more in those 200-plus pages. Today, Jenny Lipscomb emailed notice for 1219. Most people on the email list were fellow associates or friends of hers in Darcy Rosinski's firms, Gladstone City employees, people with either businesses and/or property interests on or close to Portland Avenue. Possibly one person who served as a citizen advisor on this committee was left off, maybe more. In Clackamas County, if Clackamas County and Metro have more input into our DTR plan than we do, why aren't they paying our city expenses as they do in the unincorporated areas surrounding us? I expect more of open and transparent government, and more of a project manager hired to deliver a document honestly reflective of all Gladstone residents. Whether citizens are well-informed or not of this plan is the point, not if they are for or against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Next. Last is Mindy Garlington.
I am here on behalf of the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park. So I'm just going to read you the first, the letter that we sent out at the end of this year, or we have sent out, to our friends in Gladstone. Dear neighbors and friends, as the closure of 217 draws near, the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park would like to share with you what we've been up to this past year. We have made big goals with the help of so many neighbors and friends, and we have made them happen. We invite you to be a part of a tree and shrub sponsorship program, replacing native trees and shrubs in the park. It's part of our vision to make this park a better place for all who visit this gem in Gladstone. Please see the enclosed form for further information and be a friend of your park. So, we sent out a picture. I gave a copy. It'll be in the next thing out. I have one for everybody. Of all the projects that we did through the year and some little things that happened, plus our sponsorship, tree sponsorship form that we've sent out to many people, and one of the really exciting things that's happening is that families have sent these in, and they have a chance to make their tree in memory of somebody. So that kind of makes me feel warm and fuzzy a little bit. So, anyway, that's the excitement for the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park. We have a meeting once a month. We plan to in 2018. We have a park cleanup, which is the last Saturday of every month. It's not always a cleanup. Sometimes we have great projects, and we've had a lot, a lot, a lot of friends from Gladstone and even the outlying areas that have come this last year and really helped make that park a better place. So one of the things that I hope happens in 2018 is that maybe through seeing what we have done, other groups could come forward and be a friend of the park in their neighborhood, and gather their friends and their neighbors to do the same thing, because I think that every park deserves a family around it, surrounding it, and helping it out. So that's all.
What is your website address? So that we can order the trees?
I know that. ProtectTheParks.org.
ProtectTheParks.org.
You, Nancy, I could.
And we can just order the trees online?
Online, yes, I believe. You have to print out the form.
Out the form, and then it gives instructions, okay?
Yeah, or call me.
Or call you.
Yeah, I'll come pick it up.
Okay.
I can do that. But we have a lot already, and we're going to plant some serious trees with the help of City Works. That's totally exciting. Anyway, everybody have a great night.
Thanks, Mindy. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. So next is the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion? Questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda of December 12th, 2017, 1 through 6.
Motion was made by Councillor McMahon, seconded by Councillor Tracy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda passed. Do we have any correspondence?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right. So, we're going to go on to the regular agenda, but before we proceed with the regular agenda, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. I know I say this at every meeting, but I feel it's very important that everyone understand our limitations. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plans, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead, we have to take a path that is consistent and defensible. There are many times we may have strong personal feelings relating to a topic, but we need to set those aside and limit ourselves to the framework our city documents provide. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful, engaging, and on task, and hope that you will help me do this. And with such a heavy agenda tonight, I want to make sure that we stay on task. So thank you very much. First item is number seven, which is a presentation for retired police officer Bob Maple with his retirement badge.
In regard to the council, Miss Betts, citizens, Detective Bob Maple, I appreciate the time that you've been allowed, allowed us to mark this special occasion for Bob. He has been with Gladstone Police Department for 27 years, which is a significant amount of time that he has spent in service to this great community, and we wanted to take just a moment to recognize him tonight. I was handed a breath before I finished on the lead. Lieutenant Bryant, come up and read a citation for awarding bestowed on Bob for his service here in Gladstone. In Gladstone, please try to hereby award the distinguished service medal to Detective Robert Maple for his 27 years of service to the citizens of Gladstone. Detective Maple served in many capacities while employed at Gladstone. He served honorably in the patrol division, two tours as a detective, as member of the Clackamas County Major Franks team, as a member of the Clackamas County Interagency Task Corps, as a field training officer, and as a senior officer. As a patrol officer, Detective Maple served the citizens of Gladstone well by providing safety and security to the community on a daily basis. As a detective, he led the investigation and prosecution of several high-profile major crimes, as that preceded the arrest of local homicide suspects, ensuring justice for the victims and family members affected. Detective Maple's own business partner and work with outside agencies, reflect the core values of the Gladstone program. His service of professionalism, we miss, we wish him well in his future endeavors. Keep calling. [applause] Lieutenant Bryant, Lieutenant Terry, he is here with us tonight, and we appreciate the 27 years, plus he appreciates the 27 years we gave him. Now he's yours. And we're also presenting him with his retirement badge for his service to the citizens of Gladstone. Thanks again, Bob, and I hope he stays.
I will.
[applause]
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
You're going to be missed.
For sure.
Well, you can come back anytime.
All righty.
All right. The next item is a presentation by Metro Councillor Carlotta Colette.
Thank you, Mayor Stempel and Commissioner, councilors. And I'm sorry, some of you in the back can't see the presentation, but, because there's some pretty pictures coming up here. And the first is this one, and I'll jump right into, let's see if this is going to work. There we go. Into the Willamette Falls update. This is, this will be my last update, as I think all of you know, so I'm going to wrap up a bunch of stuff and try to make it as short as I can. As you know, Willamette Falls is one of the more promising projects for our entire region. It's been such an honor to be the district two councillor who gets to bring this waterfall out to the public and get, have people actually experience it for the first time in 150 years. We are about to adopt the Riverwalk Master Plan. Some of you have come to some of our public events and seen the design for the public access to the falls. Metro, because it's a parks project, we will be adopting it as a master plan. It is that design that you've seen. We, you may have seen in the press, have had a little difficulty with the property owner. We are negotiating with him on an ongoing basis. We have, really, we're all working to just keep the project moving forward. I hope that gets resolved. The West, in the meantime, the West Lynn Paper Mill also closed, and that's a huge blow to the city of West Lynn. It was their major industry, but to all of us. It was, it was an important business. It also, however, opens up an opportunity to look at that whole falls area as a potential for job creation, economic development, tourism, of course, but just a really amazing place. If you haven't toured that side of the river, you can, you could, you folks as also councilors and mayor can contact the city council and mayor in West Lynn and get a tour. It's an amazing facility. And then finally, the Willamette Locks Commission will be starting up in January. This was created by the state, and it will, the goal is to repair and reopen the locks there at Willamette Falls, partly for economic development, for the economy, for businesses, but also for tourism. A recent economic study draft has come out, and the analysis says that if the locks are operated year-round, 12 hours a day, which is unlikely, but if they were operated that much, it would cost about $12 million over 30 years. The economic benefits of that could be as much as $53 million over that same period. So getting them up and operating could be a really great investment, and I think all of these, all of the communities that have riverfront will benefit from that. The second biggie that's going on right now is that Metro has the federal responsibility to do a regional transportation plan, integrating all of your transportation system plans, and we, in the region, cannot get federal dollars for transportation without this plan. So every four years, in the future, it'll be every five years, but right now, every four years, Metro works with all of your local government. four years, Metro works with all of your local governments all around the region to take in the projects and the values that you want as a part of that regional transportation plan and weave them all together into a plan that the federal government will accept. We just, we, I'm not sure whether Gladstone submitted any potential projects for the plan, but we have about $21 billion in projects submitted. We're reviewing them right now. You can go to oregonmetro.gov/2018projects to see a map of all the projects that have been submitted. Very shortly, we'll have an interactive website where you can actually go in and sort of look at what the costs and trade-offs are of each of the projects, so that should be really fun to see. But for the time being, if you're interested in seeing what transportation projects are being considered, go to oregonmetro.gov/2018projects. We have had three leadership forums that included the city councillors, mayors, county commissioners, business representatives, community representatives, talking about what are the values that we want incorporated in the plan. The next one will be March 2nd, and that's where it's kinda like the reality check. We have $21 billion in proposed projects. We know we can't build that over the next 40 years. We don't have that kind of money. So, what are, how do we prioritize projects will be part of the discussion at that meeting. Whoops, I pushed too hard on that. We are also in the process of the next UGB process, the Urban Growth Management process, of moving the urban growth boundary or not. That decision is set for 2018. Over the past several years, we've changed the process in this region so that it's not just a decision of what's the soil quality of various places around the outside of the region, but really, what do, what are the best places that our region can expand? We have now urban reserves, hopefully a 50-year supply of what we call urban reserves. And local governments, local cities, will be proposing additions to their cities based on these urban reserves. So, really, the cities now take the lead on urban, the next urban growth management decisions. This is actually a three-year planning process. Usually it's every six years, but when we closed the last one out, the mayor and the region asked that Metro would quickly go back into a new process. And so, we're hoping to accomplish that in three years. We are on schedule. After that, we'll go back to the six-year cycle. We're also in the process of doing a new regional waste plan. When I was first appointed to the Metro Council 10 years ago, they had just adopted the regional, what they then called the Regional Solid Waste Management Plan, otherwise known as R-SWAMP. And I know as a candidate for the appointment to the Metro Council, I thought this was about the most important thing Metro does, because we oversee the solid waste system for the entire region. It's a huge source of our revenues, but it's also a huge, important part of what we do for the region, because we can help maintain the health of the community, safety around solid waste and the recycling programs that are so critical to our region. That new plan, as I said, will be given to the Metro Council in the next fall, and that will guide the next 10 years, I think, of solid waste management. There. Oops, jump. Okay. Grants and partnerships. We just awarded 2040 planning grants. We've broken this into now an annual cycle, so every year there are approximately $2 million that go out in grants to the region's local governments. This year, Clackamas County got two grants, but District Two, this district actually got three grants. One was to Happy Valley. And I'm proud to say of the $2 million in grants that were awarded, District Two got $800,000. That's a significant proportion. So, I feel like I've been working really hard with the communities in my district to make sure that you get the kinda planning support that you need. And we're about to start now on the next cycle of our community placemaking grants, which are kind of creative centers. It's where in your community do people gather? Where could they gather? What kinds of events would really represent the culture and community spirit of your community? And how is that supported in your community? Metro might have a grant that could help you do that. The applications for that will be coming in January and I think end around January, either open or closed, January 18th, so I'm not sure which is which.
Is that one an annual cycle?
That's, this is, we had a pilot project last year. We hope to make it annual. Fingers crossed. I think this, we had just huge interest in this particular grant program. They're not large grants. They're 10, 20, 30,000, but for community groups, it's significant. And I really look forward to coming back out and seeing what kinds of things communities are doing. We are wrapping up the last of our zoo bond projects, and I wanted to put this slide up, because this is, we have, as dollars are spent on public projects, there's always a 1% for the arts. And I was on the committee that helped pick the artists and the art pieces for the zoo. We've had, this is our third and last piece. And I used this piece to talk about polar bears, because I think in the past, zoos were sort of entertainment. Zoos, animals were in cages and people went up to see them. Today's zoos, and the Oregon Zoo is world leader in this, today's zoos are about the conservation of wildlife. And this sculpture, I think more than anything, talks about the plight of polar bears. So, while the habitat that we're building for polar bears will be a celebration and a recognition of their incredible role in their ecosystem, it will also give people an opportunity to understand the impact people have on polar bears. This is called Melting Bear, and it's about 14 feet tall, so you will be able to stand under it, look into the eyes of this very sad polar bear, which is trying to reach the iceberg and move. And our efforts in terms of climate can really help preserve the habitat for polar bears. It's also interesting to point out, this is made out of recycled aluminum. It's 100% recycled aluminum, which is, virtually all aluminum in use now on the planet is recycled aluminum. There's almost no virgin aluminum being used. So, it also just delivers that message that we can recycle so many of the materials that we use and that that does help polar bears and their habitat. It is a really striking sculpture. And then finally, I threw this one in at the end, because one of my first votes as a Metro councillor 10 years ago was to move forward with the Convention Center Hotel. And then the economy crashed and the case for building a Convention Center Hotel disappeared, came back, and now we have finally broken ground. We anticipate more than 1,000 jobs created just in the construction of this, and then once it's open, I can't remember the number anymore, but it's like 300 to 500 union jobs for people working in the hotel. It was online to be one of the first union hotels in the metro region. And construction will be complete in mid-2019. So, I'm very excited about that. And then finally, I wanted to point out the handout that I gave you all. I don't have a slide on this, but Metro has been asked by a number of communities around the region to really start talking about the housing crisis that we face and to look at possibly going out to the voters in 2018 to raise money for a regional housing strategy. Affordability, possibly buying land to, that communities could, then we could pass money through to communities to build affordable housing. And we're not talking here about, I mean affordability used to mean Section 8 housing. Now, nurses, teachers, police officers, firemen can barely afford to own a home in our region. And so, affordability means very different things than it used to. We have not, the Metro Council's not decided yet to go for a bond, but we are having these conversations. And we do invite the Gladstone and you all and citizens to let us know what you think and what you would expect out of a bond measure like that. So, with that, I wanted to just say thank you, to you for serving. I know, no one is in public office at the local level for the money. And a lot of times, it's not for the love. It's for the love you have of the city and the service you give to the city. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, to be kind of your ambassador back at the regional level, to try to get funding for your community and the kinds of projects, I think especially here, the kind of parks projects that we've been able to work on together and partner on and help you to be able to pay for. It's just been a pleasure. It's been a huge honor and I will miss you all. I will miss Gladstone. We actually looked in Gladstone for a house, as well as up and down the whole district too. But I will be moving to Corvallis and I will invite you all, when you're in town, give me a call. I have the same cellphone, so some of you know. And I just really wanna thank you for your service. So, any questions?
Thank you for everything you've done.
Wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
It's been great working with you and knowing you over the years.
Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. And I thought about this a minute ago. It's a different role. I've sat in front of you, presented to you a number of times. But I will say this, this is, when I received this in our materials prior to the meeting, I was really kinda shocked at the numbers that are on here. And I think we have kind of had an awakening last week as well with our combined meeting with the school board. This is gonna be something that I think is gonna impact and affect every community in this region. But I guess until you really see the stark, you know, the numbers, it doesn't really register until you're looking at that and the quotes. And I appreciate the fact that you put the quotes, citizens' quotes, on here, because it gives us more of a connection to what the plight is out there. So, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. And I would encourage anyone in the audience who wants to go see this information, this is on the affordability and housing, to go to oregonmetro.gov/snapshot. And it's actually, there's a ton more information than here. It's really interactive. There's little videos. It tells a very, I think, scary story, a very sad story. I mean, when the median listing price for homes in the region is $409,000.
How's that affordable?
I don't know anyone starting out who could buy a home. It's just, it's, we really have to do something about it. So, thank you and thank you for your interest and concern.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we need to be involved with these discussions, for sure. Alright, the next item is number nine, which is fire department coverage standards.
Tom O'Connor, fire chief. And to my right is Don Bivins, the lead consultant for Emergency Services Consulting International. You've seen Don before. He was involved with our survey update that we did in earlier 2017. He's the lead consultant on our Community Risk Assessment Standards of Cover. That you've all had a, at least, it was in your mailbox. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review it. And he's also gonna be the lead on our strategic, upcoming department strategic plan. I've had a chance to meet with four of the seven of you in regards to this document, and I look forward to sitting down with the other three of you when we, when we get a chance. Just an update between the emails from Administrator Betts. We're not looking to actually adopt the Standards of Cover until the second meeting in January. So, I think it's important that I get a chance to meet with all of you and answer any questions you may have in regards to the document. There's not a rush. I think it's more important that we get as much into the weeds as you feel you need to, as councillors, and then feel comfortable. So, with that, I am going to turn it over to Don.
Okay. Thank you. And I have whatever is going around, and I wouldn't recommend it, and I also cannot vouch for what my voice will do. It does some funny things. Goes up and down and sideways and, so, please bear with me. I have a very short presentation. I was told that you have quite a bit on your agenda, and so this is gonna be a high-level overview of the Standard of Cover. And would really encourage not only asking questions in the presentation, but also following up with the chief and getting into the details in pretty significant detail, so that you're comfortable with the information. There's a lot of information to be had. So, the, the process is called the Community Risk Assessment Standards of Cover. What that is, is it's two separate functions that are combined and complement each other. A community risk assessment is effectively evaluating the risks the community faces and the resources the community has that can be brought to bear on those risks. That's the community risk component. The Standards of Cover is evaluating the response performance by the fire department and the deployment of resources, the fire department's resources, and benchmarking those against industry standards, and then making recommendations. That's in a nutshell what a Standard of Cover, Community Risk Assessment Standard of Cover There are three components to the risk. One is the likelihood of occurrence. The other is a consequence to the community, and the third is impact on the fire department. So, some examples of how those three components bear on each other. A car accident in the city of Gladstone is a pretty probable occurrence on any given day. It's not beyond the realm of possibility or probability that there's going to be an accident in the community. The consequence to the community is low. Not insignificant to the individuals involved in the accident, but to the broader community, the consequence of that, of that incident is low. The impact on the Gladstone Fire Department is moderate in that the resources that Gladstone Fire has and responds to that car accident are now not available for another response to another emergency that occurs in the community. So, that's an example of how the three risk levels connect with each other. Another example is the nightmare scenario, the 9.0 subduction zone earthquake. That is a low probability of occurring on any given day, although scientists are telling us be prepared, because it's coming. But on any given day, the probability is low that that day is going to experience a 9.0 subduction zone earthquake. However, the consequences of that happening to the community are devastating, and the impact to the fire department is severe in that its response, resources are completely stripped and overwhelmed as a result of responding. So, that's kind of impact, consequence, likelihood, and how they relate to each other for the community risk component. Not surprisingly, the, sorry. Thank you. I'm running two at the same time. Not surprisingly, the zoning in the city roughly approximates the level of risk the community faces. Here, the green is low risk. The yellow is moderate risk. The red is high risk. The, I was very curious about that orange strip just to the east of 205. The reason that is considered a higher risk is the homes along that area are split level with a daylight basement on the, on the east side, which lends itself to a wind-driven fire impacting those homes. And it becomes tactically difficult for the fire department to respond to those types of incidents. That's why that strip is, is a higher risk. You have only four high occupancy facilities that would be considered built-in risks that you have. They are the Gladstone High School, Kraxberger Middle School, John Wetton Elementary and the Holiday Inn Express. Those are all areas where you have reasonably high, potential for reasonably high concentrations of people in one location, and so therefore, the life risk is higher than in other areas of your community. This is a map of your water system in the city. You have some pretty significant infrastructure risks, and I'm sure that I'm not telling you something you don't already know. The asbestos cement piping in green on this, and I know that's a pretty small picture, but you have a larger one in the report itself. And everything downstream from that, that cement pipe is vulnerable to failure. And obviously, it's not only a risk in terms of potable water in the community, but also firefighting and fire suppression capability. Things have advanced pretty significantly technologically, but it still requires water to put fires out. And if the water system is- And if the water system is shut down, the fire department is significantly hobbled in its ability to handle those kinds of risks. Other examples of infrastructure risk, your hazardous materials response capability. As an organization, you have hazardous materials operations level certified personnel, which is standard in the fire service. The higher-level technician folks come from the region, and the unit is assigned at Gresham. And so, you've got response time issue to bring that resource out to a hazardous materials environment in your area, which would likely occur either on the rail or on the highway. And you have a pretty robust transportation system, public transportation system. So, you have the ability to, if something were to occur, evacuate the community for folks who don't have transportation. You at least have a public transportation infrastructure that allows and facilitates those people evacuating the city if necessary. This image is your natural risks. The green hashed areas are floodplains. And it's, the areas that are in those floodplains are fairly low population centers. The landslide risk in the community is actually really low. I was a little surprised by that. The historical landslides occur around the city, but not in the city historically. They've not occurred in the city, which is good. Also surprisingly, you are in a banana belt of sorts. You average five degrees higher temperature than the immediate vicinity around you and two inches less rainfall as compared to the surrounding areas. So, might want to add that to your advertisement about the quality of life.
Arctic, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Tropical, what?
Tropically, yeah.
Yes, I do.
The seismic risk is moderately high in the city. It's rated on a seven, on a scale of one to 10, 10 being the worst. Seven is considered very strong shaking. That means that damage would be negligible to buildings that are of good design and good construction, modern practices. Slight to moderate in damage in well-built, ordinary structures. And considerable damage in poorly built and badly designed structures. A lot of chimneys broken, a lot of foundations cracked, those kinds of things. So, you can expect that kind of damage as a result of an earthquake in your area. The good news is that the demand for emergency response in the city of Gladstone is pretty static. It is fairly flat across the last five years. Little tiny fluctuations year over year. That's a good thing. It makes planning a lot easier. And there are some small little fluctuations in there that are interesting. Good intent calls being higher more recently than earlier, but at the same time, public services being lower than they used to be. So, that may be a function of how the call is categorized once crews get back to quarters.
What's a good intent call?
Great question.
Okay, well, if it takes, don't worry about it.
No, no.
I'll get it.
It could be anything.
Yeah. The example I always use is someone sees what they think is smoke coming from a building. They call 911, and it's steam from a dryer.
Okay, got it.
That's a good intent.
Got it.
They intended good things, it just wasn't a fire.
All right.
And we can't categorize it to anything else as well, as it's like a catch-all sometimes.
But that makes it sound nice.
Right. Yeah, not otherwise specified is another way of saying it. This is your demand distribution. The little white dots are where your calls occurred in 2017 through August or September. The date, the month escapes me right now, but it's in your report. But the background green indicates the concentration of those calls. So, for example, you might see one dot, but it's in a dark green area, which may mean that that one dot received multiple responses from the fire department. And that might be someone who is having difficulty living independently. If you have nursing homes and senior care facilities, those tend to be significant demand draws from the fire department. You have the unique advantage of having the one fire station reaching almost all of the city of Gladstone in four minutes travel time from your existing fire station. So, the dark green in this picture is four minutes, theoretically, four minutes of travel time from the fire station. That assumes that somebody is in the fire engine, the fire engine is running, and the clock starts as the vehicle is pulling off of the ramp and drives to wherever it goes to. It can reach almost all of the city in four minutes of travel time. It doesn't count the call processing time at 911, and it doesn't count the turnout time that goes from notification to firefighters to responding to the fire station and taking the apparatus on the response.
So, this is just leaving the station?
This is just travel.
Obeying all traffic laws and speed limits? Police chiefs in the back.
That's okay, that's okay. Statutorily, the fire department's allowed to exceed the traffic rules, but with due care and caution and safety for the, care for the safety of others. This is the minimum staffing levels by risk and incident type. What we do here is we take the information we have on the community risk. We take the resources that the fire department has. We plot all of the critical tasks that are necessary to manage or mitigate an emergency. And obviously, those tasks vary by the type of incident that you're responding to. And this is a roll-up chart of those numbers. In the actual report, you'll see individual critical tasks analysis, where the critical tasks are listed. So, for a non-structure fire, a low risk would require four people. A moderate risk would require six. For a structured fire, a moderate risk would be 15. That means that Gladstone may or may not rely on mutual aid or automatic aid agencies to provide that 15 people. It depends on the response by the POCs, as well as the changes that you're making to the deployment of your personnel. Is having a pretty significant impact on that too, positive impact. These are the elements in our response that we recommend that the city of Gladstone adopt as their standards for delivery of emergency services. Turnout time, which is the amount of time it takes from notification from the dispatch center that a call has occurred until the vehicle is actually rolling toward the emergency. So, that reaction time for the firefighters is called turnout time. Fire and special operations is 120 seconds. It takes a little bit longer to do that than for EMS calls because they have to put on more gear. Excuse me. And that should be done up to or exceeding 80% of the time. So, you should be doing that at least 80% of the time, 120 seconds turnout time for fire calls. For EMS calls, 90 seconds, faster because you don't have the protective equipment issues that you have with fire. Again, also at 80% or greater. For a fire, first arriving fire engine should arrive in six minutes, 80% or more of the time. EMS, first arriving medical unit, five minutes, 30 seconds, 80% of the time or greater. Water rescues, the first water rescue technician should be on scene within eight minutes, 30 seconds, 80% or more of the time. And hazardous materials, first hazmat operations certified person, six minutes, 80% or more of the time. The reason that hazardous materials is, has a more aggressive standard than the water rescue is because virtually everybody in the Gladstone Fire Department is hazmat operations certified. So, if you can muster people, they have the certification, they can respond and manage that hazardous materials incident. The water rescue technicians, much higher level of training. You have fewer of those folks. Therefore, we built in some time for those folks to assemble and be able to respond to that emergency. And then finally, for fire, an effective fire response, this is actually a requirement of NFPA 1720, which is a standard for substantially volunteer fire departments, which paid-on-call organizations fit in that category as well. That says that you should have your 15 people on scene within nine minutes, 90% or more of the time. That is the only specific timestamped requirement from NFPA 1720. The rest of them are ESCI's recommendations based on your performance and your ability to meet those recommendations. So, the recommendations that we make in the report are that you, we would recommend that you adopt the performance goals that we listed on the previous page, that there be annual performance reporting. We gave you a sample of an annual performance report at the back of the report as an appendix. And it does a number of things. It provides transparency because the fire department is obligated to provide an annual report to the city council in an open public session to let the community know how they're doing compared to the standards that you set. And it causes dialogue to occur between the fire department and the city council, the policymakers. And it also requires that if there are any gaps where the fire department is not able to achieve a certain performance goal, identify what the causal factors are and make specific recommendations for how, what their plan is to address those gaps for the following year, to make things better. We recognize that your facility is very tight. There are a lot of adjectives that we could use to describe it, but the space around the apparatus in the truck bay does not meet NFPA standards. It creates some safety issues when you've got people running to vehicles and putting their gear on in the apparatus. I am surprised you haven't had more accidents for apparatus pulling out of the station or backing in. I haven't seen any scars on the walls, so, good training program. And, or luck, yeah. Paid-on-call recruitment and maintenance. We think that the Gladstone Fire Department is going to be reliant on paid-on-call people for the foreseeable future. We don't see a future that doesn't have paid-on-call folks. So, it's critical that Gladstone Fire redouble their efforts to recruit. It's difficult, having a static sign up saying, "We're accepting applications." After a while, citizens drive by it and they don't even realize that it's there. They don't see, they don't read it anymore. So, changing that up. And there are a lot of creative ways that you can recruit citizens in the community. The department has, because the department has had difficulty recruiting people within the community, they've started to accept people that are outside the community that can respond to bolster your numbers for response. We think that's an appropriate thing to do, but we do think that it's appropriate to limit the number of people that you do that with. The difficulty when you start relying on those folks is the community starts taking a breath and relaxing and saying, "Well, they've got it, and they may live 20, 30, 40 minutes away." And then when you actually need them on a quick response, they're not there. So, we recommend that you limit the out-of-area, out-of-community paid-on-call folks to no greater than 20% of the total paid-on-call force. And then, the final recommendation is that we consider, it's not a have-to, it's a consideration that you evaluate your response based on the risk elements that are included in the report, which means that you can get more resources to higher-risk areas and fewer resources to lower-risk areas. I will tell you upfront, the risk of doing that is that you may under respond to an incident. And so, you need to approach it from a thoughtful and deliberative point of view. And the people responding can always upgrade the response if they believe that the response is inadequate.
But then that's just a delay, even longer delay.
Correct, that's correct. That's it. Can I ask any questions?
First, Chief, who all up here have you been able to meet with yet so far?
I've met with Counselor McMahon, Counselor Reisner, yourself, and Counselor Milch.
Okay, so, there's still the three people that you need to sit down with? Okay.
Yeah, and I'm actually off the next couple of weeks. I'm not going to Hawaii, but I'm going somewhere pretty fun.
Where are you going, Chief?
I'm going to, I'm going to Mexico, and then I'm going to, going to the LA area if it's still there. But I guess I say that just because if we can meet this week, that's great. If not, because our timeline is not rushed, post-holidays would be great, would be fine.
Okay. So, this is more of a presentation than a dive-deep-in-the-weeds question-and-answer period, so... So, the three of you that have not met with him yet, I encourage you to do so, so that we can hit this heavy in January.
Noted.
I just have a couple of comments. Hopefully, we do not have a 9.0 earthquake today because, sitting in this building, we will all be dead.
Yes.
Other than we are working to fix that. I was pretty impressed with the comments, in particular, from the internal stakeholders. Having been an internal stakeholder for 10 years myself, I was very pleased with what a lot of the members said was what, if you had asked me six years ago when I was a member, I would have told you the same thing, that they are recognizing a lot of the issues and they're not afraid to say. The biggest issue had always been, the 12 years that I was there was two in the morning, Tuesday morning. You have a core group, you always have a core group that you could count on, but there's always that time when it, only the one person shows up, and they recognize it. And I really, I thought that was great of whoever showed up that night. So, just my comments are my kudos to the group, the internal stakeholders, so.
One thing to add to that, the 20% or less recommendation on out-of-city POCs was actually a recommendation that the staff internally made. The folks that were there said, "We recognize that we need to bring more people in, and if the community, if we're not able to get traction inside the community, we need to bring some people out from the outside. But when the chips are down, those people are going to be a long ways away, and we think that maybe capping that number would be appropriate." I thought that was brilliant, and we actually incorporated it as a recommendation in the report. They were stellar people. I was really impressed. I was also very impressed with your citizen group. They were very engaged, very interested in what was going on, liked being invited to participate. I recommended to the chief that you not let that resource go untapped on a regular basis because if they are representative of the business community, that's feedback that you should be getting on a regular basis.
And can you speak for a minute or two, I think? So, the biggest issue has been for the last 15 years, and you speak of it a little bit, is just that, especially in a town like this, the father's grandfather's son's model of volunteering, paid-on-call is done. We cannot look to that, and it's not just Gladstone, it's nationwide, to where every place, especially the smaller departments that have always relied on that kind, are really struggling. And I think this speaks to that pretty well, that those days are done. We have to start looking forward to some new changes, to some new direction to keeping the department here. So, this is a the, the department here, so, this is a good start.
Yeah, I would say, I, I would agree to a point. I wouldn't say that having, you know, generational representation is dead. I would say that it cannot carry the day. You can't, that will not be a model for success and sustainability going forward. You need to add additional fresh blood, fresh perspectives in the community, and there's, there's huge advantages, not only having citizens involved in, in providing responses to their neighbors, but you start developing such a blend between who is the community and who is the fire department, and, and that's when you're really hitting on all cylinders, when people see the fire department and the community as one and the same.
Yeah. Absolutely. So, are there some people out there that want to volunteer? I'm sure they've got some applications downstairs. All right, well, thank you very much.
Can I add one comment, too?
Yes.
One of the things that impressed me most in my conversation with Chief O'Connor was looking at, for example, the, you, you showed the map of the risk assessment, where you were able to identify certain areas or regions or structures in the community that were at higher risk than others, you know, and it's not a matter of the fire department just crossing their fingers and saying, "Boy, I hope we don't get a call from one of those places." A significant amount of time the department has spent planning and being aware of, you know, how they would deploy the hoses and the equipment, and where they would park, and how they would access it if a fire were to recur in one of those areas. You know, you don't wait for the disaster to happen and then just kind of, you know, go on instinct. That kind of planning is reassuring to me as a citizen and as, as an elected official, too. So, it, it's good to get this feedback. I appreciated the honesty of the report. There's both good and bad, criticism, honest criticism, honest assessment, and we will have numbers and metrics by which we'll be able to evaluate the performance of the department in future years, and make comparisons and see where we're doing a good job, and in some cases, if it happens where we're not, and where we can improve. And it's always helpful to have that, and not just to rely on general impressions.
Right.
So, to the extent that you've involved citizens and staff and city leaders, too, I applaud your efforts on this, and look forward to the time we may have to consider it and adopt it.
All right, anybody else?
I have a quick question. So, your built risks on the assemblies, I'm noticing on this, on page fifty-one, you spoke of the schools and the Holiday Inn. Do we not take into account some of the other larger dense, dense populations, or just, I guess the question is why or why not, for, for instance, the large multifamily complexes and/or Somerset, which has got combined density, population densities?
The, the schools are kind of a no-brainer, simply because it's high concentration of people who are probably going to need some help being evacuated.
Sure.
The Holiday Inn Express, they're really the only reason that it landed on the, on the infrastructure, the built risk, is its height.
Okay.
And the, the impact on the fire department affecting rescue and upper floors of the apartment, or the hotel.
Okay. So, the other facilities would not necessarily fall under these characteristics for various different qualifying variables?
Yeah, and you could, reasonable people can, can argue that densely populated apartment complexes, especially where you have significant mobility issues, that's absolutely-
Okay.
-a, a risk, and needs to be factored in.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is ten appointments to city boards, committees, and commissions.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You have a series of applications to consider this evening for various boards, committees, and commissions. I did want to note that we have scheduled a volunteer orientation for January twenty-ninth at five-thirty PM in this room, and we'll do some more promoting before we get to that date. That will be our annual ethics by the city attorney on what you can and can't do with email, social media, communications, and also go through the freshly amended roles and responsibilities, because you will be looking at that at your January ninth meeting to amend it. So, my suggestion would be for you to take these one at a time and to go through them. I can tell you that it's okay to have vacancies on committees. You have people on your committees that are working and conducting business and getting work done, and we will continue throughout the year to advertise for positions that we still need people to apply to on these committees. And I think that the other thing is that you got an agenda item ten D, which was one additional parks board application that we received yesterday after the deadline. We also just received one before tonight's meeting that Tammy's holding on to until we told you, if you wanted to consider it tonight, we would, or we would wait until January and bring it back to you.
I would say hold it until January and bring it back to us.
Okay. So, the one that you have is this one from ten D that can be considered as part, when we get to the Parks and Board.
Okay.
So, your first one is the Audit Committee, and there are two applications, and there are four vacancies if the city council feels that it needs to be a full committee. Typically, cities that have audit committees will run with two to three members on that committee, and they do just fine.
Okay.
So, what, what we're going to do is put up a sheet, and Tammy's just going to ask each counselor who your pick is, and we'll just go down the line for each committee as we get to them.
What if we made a motion, would that, for-
If you have a consensus and want to do it that way, you can do it that way as well.
Do we want to do it this way, or does someone want to make a motion, or-
Motion for-
To appoint people? Or do we want to just do it this way, where we-
I'm not quite following you, I guess.
Either make a motion to say, "Yes, we would like to appoint Johnson and Wieland," or just Johnson or just Wieland, or do we want to do the roll call vote?
Well, I'd rather do a roll call, at least on this, these two.
Okay, that's fine.
So, I have a question. So, say one of the applicants either gets only one or two, and there's votes-
Right.
And no other votes for that person, he is then, or she then, is still accepted, is that correct? They don't need a majority of the council?
No, each, each applicant, each name would have to have a majority of council votes in order to be appointed.
Okay.
Perfect, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
All right. Okay, Tammy.
Are you wanting me just to roll call?
So, we can vote for one, we can vote for two, or we can vote for none.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Milch.
Only Wieland.
Counselor Neef.
Um, Wieland.
Counselor Tracy. Counselor Reisner.
Wieland only.
Counselor McMahon.
Wieland.
Counselor Mercero.
Wieland.
Mayor Stimple, Wieland.
All right, so, Priscilla is on the Audit Committee.
And I would, just want to clarify, then, well, being that the Audit Committee meets, what, next month?
I believe that's when we're going to have the draft, yes.
So-
So, that gives you three members.
Right, so, do we want to continue?
I, I would say that we, we don't continue at this point.
How it works.
Yeah, just see how three work.
That was going to be my recommendation.
Yes.
I didn't know if we needed a motion or anything.
All right, so, the next is the Budget Committee, and again, same as this-
Yes, correct.
All right, Tammy.
Counselor Milch.
Umbra.
Counselor Neef. Counselor Tracy.
Umbra.
Counselor Reisner.
Umbra only.
Counselor McMahon.
Umbra.
Counselor Mercero.
Umbra.
Mayor Stimple.
Umbra. All right, so, Colette is on the Budget Committee. All right, the next one is the Library Board.
I have a question. Normally, the Library Board interviews candidates. Has, has this candidate been interviewed and recommended by the Library Board? Is anyone here?
Yes, they, they were.
Yeah.
She was.
Thank you.
Counselor Neef.
Ikestead.
Counselor Tracy.
Ikestead.
Counselor Reisner.
Ms. Ikestead.
Counselor McMahon.
Ikestead.
Counselor Mercero.
Ikestead.
Mayor Stimple.
Nancy Ikestead. So, what else do you want to volunteer for? Now that we've got you.
Thank you.
So, on this one, you can choose three if you want to, or you could choose one, or you could choose two.
All righty.
Is this from planning you're referring to?
Park and Rec.
Park and Rec.
Ms. one, who we got in?
All right, Tammy.
Counselor Milch. Counselor Neef.
Hold on just a second. Domer, William Preble, and Benjamin Mizeley.
Counselor Tracy.
Mizeley, Osborne, Preble.
Counselor Reisner.
Mizeley, Osborne, Preble.
Counselor McMahon.
Mizeley, Dorner, Preble.
Counselor Mercero.
Mizeley, Preble, Dorner.
Mayor Stimple.
Mizeley, Osborne, Preble.
Mizeley, Preble, and Dorner.
All right, the next one is Planning Commission. So, you have two positions vacant, you have three applicants, and same process. So, Mr. Preble just was appointed, what, two months ago, three months ago?
Recently.
Just a couple months ago, okay. And Patrick's been on for a while. Okay. All right, Tammy.
Counselor Milch.
Langston and Smith.
Counselor Neef.
Langston and Smith.
Counselor Tracy.
Langston, Smith.
Counselor Reisner.
Preble and Smith.
Counselor McMahon.
Uh, Langston, Smith.
Counselor Mercero.
Langston, Smith.
Mayor Stimple.
Preble and Smith. All right, the next one is the Senior Center Advisory Board. So, there are three vacancies and three applicants. Same process. All right, Tammy.
Counselor Milch.
All three.
Counselor Neef.
All three.
Counselor Tracy.
All three.
Counselor Reisner.
I agree with my colleagues, all three.
Counselor McMahon.
All three.
Counselor Mercero. Mayor Stimple.
All three.
That was easy. All right, the last is the Traffic Safety Commission. So, there are three vacancies, two applicants.
Counselor Milch.
Cosgrove and Osborne.
Counselor Neef.
Um, Cosgrove and Osborne.
Counselor Tracy.
Cosgrove and Osborne.
Counselor Reisner.
I'll go for both.
Counselor McMahon.
Uh, both.
Counselor Mercero. Mayor Stimple. Linda Cosgrove and Bill Osborne.
Congratulations, everybody. Great job. Thank you. Very much.
May I make a statement?
Mm-hmm.
We've established a rule where we want to try to encourage a larger number of people to participate in these committees, and one of the ways we did that is try to limit the number of committees on which one person can serve. I know some of you have applied to be on more than one. We sort of ended up making a selection, which of the multitude of committees you want to be on, you're going to serve on. Perhaps it would have been better to ask you where you'd rather serve, but I, I think it's important, sometimes if we don't give reasons for the things we do, the public makes up their own reasons for why we did it, and I wanted to be sure that, you know, we see people contributing in positive ways to a variety of things, and, and we voted because we wanted some new faces, we wanted old faces to serve in the areas where they, we feel they can best serve the city. I hope I speak for the rest of you when I make a statement like that.
Yeah, thank you very, very much. All right, next is item eleven, Declare City Property Surplus, Resolution Number 1127, to consider declaring property located at 16475 Main Street, Oregon City, as city surplus property.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Items number eleven and twelve are similar in nature, but we split them out because we have two different resolutions. I have a Public Works Director and a Police Chief that are very happy that we're having this conversation tonight. These properties that we're discussing have been a drain on city resources from a public safety standpoint and a liability. So, the first one that you have tonight is 16475 Main Street, known as the Rainy Collector Intake Site.
River Resource Museum.
We, we brought a couple of photos up here that aren't in the packet, and there is a very public process, for good reason, that a city must go through when it wants to sell a piece of property. One, the city council has to deem that there's no public benefit to having this property, and then you have to declare it surplus. If you choose to do that this evening by a resolution, then we would enlist a Realtor to assist the city in that process. Everything that we negotiate would have to be done in an open session, except for the purchase price can be done in executive session, but then later come out into an open session. And really, what we wanted to talk about is, is that we've had issues with homeless people on site, hazardous needles, garbage dumping, illegal camping. Our police officers have been out there numerous times. In order to get this decommissioned, it would cost between fifty to seventy thousand dollars, and the city has not done that step yet. It's my understanding that a couple of years ago, Oregon City was interested in this property, but they didn't want to pay what the former city administrator at that time was asking for, or they didn't want to have it decommissioned.
They wanted to pay one dollar.
Pardon?
They wanted to pay one dollar. I don't know- Yeah. -if that's the case or not. Yeah. So, in your staff report, we listed the, the noted public concerns regarding graffiti, the access, the pictures. I think there's one other picture up there as well. That's for the other property, so-
Those are the only two, right?
Are those the only two?
Yes.
Okay. So, the other thing that we wanted to make sure is that we were following measures three five oh five and three five oh six.
because language that was approved in our charter virtually affects all properties within Gladstone. So, as long as this property would permit a park, either outright or conditionally, or as an accessory use, it would need voter approval for us to sell or lease it. And so, if that's the case, really, tonight, the first step is for you to declare it surplus through a resolution, and then we would refer it to a vote of the people on the May ballot, saying, "Can we sell this property for this reasons?" And if that passes, then we would list it for sale and go through that process.
So, for this one, do you have any additional questions? Just for clarification, that whole spit that it sits on is not owned by Gladstone. We only own the, what, half acre, quarter acre-ish that the River Resource Museum sits on. The rest of it belongs to Oregon City. So, it's kind of a weird piece.
Uh, but it is in the city. It is in Gladstone City limits, so...
Yes, that one piece.
So, would we also be thinking about de-annexing that piece also?
Yes, thank you, because if you look at our map, it's a square that doesn't fit in the boundaries. And so, that would be the next step, is to work with Oregon City to have it annexed over there. And then again, if we want to sell it, I would have conversations again with Oregon City to see if they are still interested in it. So, it's a very lengthy process, but we had to get it started, because like I said, our law enforcement and our Public Works crews are out there constantly, and it is an eyesore and a public hazard.
The rest of the area around it is part of the Cove Project that Ed Darrow's building, and it's all going to be rehabbed, restored, to native habitat in low wetlands. So, it'll be a park, but not one that people can really access.
And if we do refer it to a May election and it's not approved, then it will just continue to be city property.
Would somebody like to make a motion on this resolution, or have more questions for staff?
I recommend, make a motion to recommend that we try to sell the property.
So, declare it as surplus property. So, on page 11-3, the recommendation is scripted there.
Okay. I make a recommendation to approve Resolution Number 1127, a resolution declaring certain real property to be surplus, 16475 Main Street, Oregon City, and in the following discussion.
And the Gladstone City Council directs staff to submit a measure to Gladstone voters for the May 28 election to approve a potential sale of the property. Two, if the voters approve the measure, market the property for sale. And three, if an offer is made on the property, negotiate a purchase and sale agreement for the Gladstone City Council's approval, and take all other actions necessary under Oregon law to sell the property.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Mercero, seconded by Counselor McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's passed. Thank you. The next agenda item is number 12, Declare City Property Surplus, Resolution Number 1128. Consider declaring property, blank, blank, parcel, Clackamas River Drive in Oregon City as city surplus property. Staff?
This is an interesting piece of property, because it's not even in the city limits. It's a 6.95 chunk of wooded acre in Clackamas County. A Public Works Director and I researched. We couldn't find the history on how the city obtained this. But I can tell you, our Public Works crews were out there with storm damage last year. It drained our budget that we have for hazardous removal of trees that we could be using in our own city parks. We had a claim filed against us for a tree that fell on the neighboring home there last year. And so, our recommendation is that, because this property is outside the city, it doesn't fall within our measure, so we do not need to have voter approval to sell this. So, if the city declared it surplus, we could go ahead and list this for sale and start that process. Our recommendation that any sale proceeds would go into the parks budget for future projects, but that's something that would be determined by the City Council at that time.
I do know when a previous Assistant City Administrator brought this to our attention a couple of years ago, it was something that was either donated or given to the city in the early 1900s.
Yeah, like 1910.
And it was by, I can't think of the name, but it was, we named a street after him, or he had a street named after him as well, somewhere in the city, so... And I think it was $25 or $50 or something at the time thing, so...
So, this is a fairly steep, really steep on the Clackamas River Drive side.
Correct. It requires septic, it has a lot of trees. And just for clarification, the Realtor that we solicited was recommended by Clackamas County through their surplus property program. We originally tried to piggyback on the county to try to sell these pieces, but realized that's not something that we can really do multi-jurisdictional. So, they gave us the RE/MAX. Casra is the one that's done the workup for us on this. We have not entered into an agreement with him, but he is the one that staff would use to list the property for sale.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve Resolution Number 1128, a resolution declaring certain real property to be surplus, 2200600, Parcel 00546635S on South Clackamas River Drive, Oregon City, and the Gladstone City Council directs staff to market the real property for sale. And if an offer is made on the property, negotiate a purchase and sale agreement for the City Council's approval, and make all other actions necessary under Oregon law to sell the property.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 1128's passed.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is number 13, Proposed Election-Related Amendments to the City Charter.
We haven't talked, but since I put this together, you want me to take the...
Uh, yes.
It does say Counselor Reisner.
It does.
This is something Counselor Reisner asked to be put on the agenda.
Thank you. So, as discussed a few months ago, at the end of one of our meetings, and we've had several citizens come forward, asking about appointments to the council if there's vacancies. Also, back last year, we had a committee, ad hoc committee, that was formed, looking at the charter as a whole. And I've talked with, you know, a couple of you, not all of you, about the, maybe bringing the different parts of the charter back in hunks instead of the whole thing like we did last year. I put this together to get the conversation going, and also hopefully to, sooner than later, make some decisions in that regard. And being that we've had several citizens bring up this topic, and that it seemed to be, for the most part, fairly minimal in controversy last year, is why I'm bringing it forth. I did change the proposal from what was, or at least parts of it, from what was proposed last year. City Administrator Betts had sent out the whole thing yesterday, I believe it was?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and Section 32 was, you know, how to replace, was the steps that was proposed at that time to replace city councilors. And there was a before and after, you know, before, if there was like 17 months to the next election, then it'd be appointed. If not, it would be, go to the November election. My suggestion would be, being that there's four elections a year, March, May, September, and November, is to do away with the appointment altogether and just let the citizens decide at the next election. But, that's just a...
But we're just starting the conversation here. We're not making a decision.
Well, true. And so, that's why, like I say, I put down five different options. I guess there'd be a sixth, going with what was proposed last year on Section 32. Also, I included in here the Section 8, which was also proposed, changed from last year, which kind of goes along with, you know, city council members. So, and, oh, yeah.
Well, I don't know what you guys want to do, but I think I'd like to spend more time looking at this, because I think breaking it up into chunks makes more sense, because the thing failed, I believe, because of just a couple items that folks were uncomfortable with. So, I think that makes sense, but I think we need to spend a little bit of time thinking about how we want to break that up.
I agree with that, and would recommend, there was a lot of work put into this.
Yes.
A committee, Charter Committee, spent several weeks, in fact, mulling it over. And then the council did some more mulling over and changed it all, or changed parts, I should say. And yet it failed. I think the amendment approach is probably not a bad way to go, but I think since it failed like it did, that we really have a plan of how we want to do it, and what fashion we want to do it, and just have a work session basically to come up with that. And then, whatever we come up with, then go for it.
Okay. Is that something we could do maybe in February?
So, do we have the fire and police levies coming up in May as well?
No.
We have, November will be the fire and police levy. In May, you have the library ballot measure, which is our primary. Now, you have added this item to sell the property. And if you wanted to get something on the May ballot, I believe you're looking in January to have to have that done for a charter amendment. That would be difficult to achieve.
Or in November, yes. Because we do have a ton on our plate.
Yes.
And I want to put some good thought into this, so that we know exactly how to break it up, so we don't have the same issue that we had this last time.
I agree with that.
We could create another, do you want to do a work session or create another subcommittee to revisit this?
I think we need to start with a work session, so that we can make a plan, and then maybe have an ad hoc group of some sort, or a committee, to help us.
Okay, so, my recommendation is we're doing the second meeting of the month. In February, I'd like to hold that for Business License Program discussion.
Okay.
That is where the work session for that will come in, and address, hopefully, Mr. Parsons' concerns, to give direction to us on the Business License Program.
Okay.
And then, that means it's second meeting in March would be for the charter amendments, if that works for you.
That would go, good for me.
Yeah, I don't think that we're going to need a lot of time to actually, for us to come up with a plan. So, maybe we can add it to February? Because if we do it in March, then we speak, we, you know, hash it out the end of March, then we create a committee to help move it forward, which may be another two months.
We can do two work sessions on the second meeting in February.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think this piece is going to really take that much time.
No, I don't think so either.
So, can we add it to February?
Yes.
Is that alright with you guys?
Yep.
Okay.
And we could always put it on, I mean, if we were to decide to go forward, there is election in September. Lex Lynn used it.
Yeah, well, we can make that decision after we start talking about it.
Right, I'm just throwing it out there for...
But no, I want us to have a good plan in place.
I think it would also be helpful for us to get some information on how long a lead time the Election Board requires for candidates to declare themselves to be candidates for an election. The time periods that you had on there seem to me a little bit short for that, and so, if we could get that information, research it, then we can fine tune. If we decide to go with an amendment similar to what you've drafted, we can fine tune those dates and numbers and make sure that...
So, that way we can go through that.
That came right out of the ORS, those times.
Not the dates of the elections, but the amount of lead time.
No, the lead time was too.
Oh, okay. Well, I wouldn't want a situation where somebody resigned a position one night, and somebody else was the only person who would manage to get their paperwork in on time to be appointed. You know, I'd like there to be a gap where it can be a truly democratic process.
Oh, definitely. That's why I...
We can start talking about that in January then at the work session. Okay, so is that alright with everybody? Okay, so the next item is number 14, Request to Review the City Attorney Invoices. Counselor Reisner.
So, as I proposed back last month, at the end of the meeting, and it was late. We didn't get out of here till like 10 o'clock, and felt that the suggestion, bringing it back later as in like right now was a good idea. I'd like to move that financial records be made available, past, current, and future, to city councilors.
Okay, I have a question. Why past? We have a different department head group. We have a different city administrators, so why do we need to go back through the past ones?
Uh, history?
Okay, I mean, my concern with that is, when we start going through past bills, it's going to suck up a lot of staff time, and they're so busy that I just, I can't see justifying that. I can see more open access future, but I just don't see the value of going in and...
How would it suck up staff time?
Finding everything, presenting it to whoever it is that wants to look at it. I mean, I don't, I just can imagine that taking a lot of time.
But we had discussion that, you know, we were going to move forward, and I feel with Ms. Betts, she has done an excellent job of keeping control over finances. She's been watching very closely, and has been very, you know, brought everything forward to the council, and has shared the information. And I feel that we really, you know, we have to trust her, and know that she's being transparent to us, and we've had better records from her than what, yes, from what we've had, and I agree, we shouldn't have to go backwards. We should, you know, maintain what has been going on for the last six months, eight months.
Going backwards, I think, is useful in just comparing. You know, it's helpful to be able to say, yes, we spent X amount of dollars on this year, but that's only half of what we spent the previous year. So, if looking backwards gives you comparative statistics, then it's useful.
Generalized statistics.
Yeah, in general, yeah.
So, Neil, can you explain why, what invoices, or is it just, it says here, the City Attorney Invoices. So, is that all you're asking for, or...
Well, that, I didn't put the heading. My motion from last month was all financial records. As far as I know, it is financial records that we're not allowed to view.
In particular, what are you looking for? I guess I'm not following what you're looking for. What financial records do you want?
So, well, I mean, for example, we paid $10,000 for a website, to a website company that didn't produce a website.
Okay, we know that.
But is there anything else that happened over the last year that we don't know about?
So, then, what you want to do is be the forensic auditor of the books?
No, it's not the forensic auditor. So, part of our charter, you know, is to be responsible for financial...
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
And so, there's, uh, so I, I take that, uh, pretty seriously. And, uh, being able to, you know, look at our different financial transactions, I think is, is part of that.
Okay, I agree, and I think that we should have access to it a hundred percent, absolutely. But I wanna find a way to do it that doesn't suck up all of our staff time, because if you wanna sit in there and go through all of the books, which you are in the weeds kinda guy, I can see that spent, taking a lot of time, then Pat'll wanna go in and see stuff, and Tom, and myself, and the rest of us. So if you look at us cumulatively, that's a lot of staff time. So is there a way to have this information available to us, that is confidential, but, and doesn't require a ton of staff time?
Well, I think that financial information, like, within your packet tonight, is very transparent, and these are on the city's website, and, and we, we give you the, the detail, more so than, than a lot of other cities do. If you're wanting to come in and say, I'd like to know what Chief Jolly charged on his credit card, I don't think that's, that's fair, that's what you've hired me to oversee in here. And I, and I think that's what you're wanting, is access to any receipts or anything, to see who's buying what, which, that is all in our financial documents, charges that are made. So, I don't understand either what financial records-
Well, back last year, this, you know, the council, granted it isn't the same members as now, voted to restrict that.
Twice.
Twice, right, thank you, yeah, twice.
And we voted it down.
So, you know-
You asked the same question at least twice before, if not three times, and we, in fact, voted down as a council, at least twice before. And so I'm asking, why in the heck are you asking this question again?
So you're saying that we still need to uphold the ruling that you made two years ago, that says Neil cannot have access to attorney's bills?
Well, I, I'm not sure what he's asking, though, is that, you just want attorney's bills, or do you want?
Oh, that'd be a good place to start, attorney bill, well, okay, I'll answer, yes, attorney bills.
So I guess my issue with that also is the same thing, is that we, we, we hire the city administrator, we hire the police chief, the fire chief, all those to, to run, um, the departments efficiently. If, if you have a concern, you need to, you, it's a witch hunt right now, you just want, you want to just take things, I believe. You just want to look at things to find things, but if you're not, without, because you don't know that that, there is anything wrong. A perfect example is, like we've talked before, is the oil filter-
Headlight.
Headlight.
Let's get it straight.
It was miss-
Twenty dollars.
Yes, and you wasted the city's time for over an hour, probably, I bet you, from start to finish, because the, uh, repair company had miscoded a light. A twenty dollar light, you spent a hundred dollars of the city's time. So that's where, that's where my heartache comes, and if you, for a twenty dollar item, and I get it, you, you like to look at the nitty gritty, that's fine, but that's, again, why we pay staff-
Well, you're, you're right, in regards to that, I did ask, because our city admin, uh, administrator at the time had a car that that headlight was, um, for, and none of our other city vehicles did.
So you, so you didn't trust- You didn't trust the city administrator, and you thought he was stealing, so-
Well, it went through the city administrator, went through this, this, you know, the police, uh, chief, and the police assistant, uh, this is before your time, Jeff. And, so, but, you know, there's been, at least in the last five years, five different, um, public servants that have been arrested for embezzlement, becau, and they got caught because somebody noticed something was out of kilter. No, in, in, in the county.
No.
So, you know, I mean, as far east as Estacada, and the, uh, director across the river, um, just a couple of years ago, down in Milwaukee, Clackamas County.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so, if, if you wanna be precise, sure, you know, the attorney bill, precise. It's something that you don't supervise the, uh, the attorney, we do. But because of earlier votes, nobody sees what the attorney does, except for showing up here and, and giving us great advice. We don't know what, what, you know, what communication-
Packet tonight, under consent-
Well, I know.
You adopted a spreadsheet under legal, that had all the projects that is coded to in the bill that the attorney works on. That is new information that we created this past year for you.
Yes, that we didn't do before.
Before that, you didn't know, correct? So is that not sufficient?
Not for me, but apparently it is for the others.
So I, I, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna weigh in. So as I was looking through expenditures last night, I, um, though I understand, Counselor Reisner, um, your need for full transparency, I, I was very surprised, I mean, I've looked at some of these before. I work for an agency that runs, uh, tens of millions of dollars through its budget, and our budgets come to us phone book size, the old, you know, Manhattan-type phone book size. These expenditure reports, to me, are probably the most detailed I've ever seen in government, and I've been in government for a long time, uh, down to a nine-volt alkaline battery. Um, so frankly, I mean, I'm satisfied, myself, I'm satisfied that this is the kinda detail we're at, and I think the citizens, uh, if they requested the information, they would be satisfied in this type of detail as well. I will, though, side with Counselor Reisner, on the potential for, on occasion, and I don't feel the need is now, um, to review professional services contracts, review professional services invoices, especially if in those, any professional services go beyond a budgetary number or appropriations number, I think that's fair.
Those come to council, after, over my-
As they should, and I think that's totally fair. I think, though, Counselor Reisner, I think, um, you're digging really deep, and there's a lot of stuff that's already out here. If we're talking about tens, or fifteens, or twenties, or hundreds of thousands of dollars, that's gonna show up somewhere very quickly, given this type of detail in the expenditure reports, I believe. So I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for. Um, to me, when we were, you're talking about the light bulb, uh, I mean, we know that the fire department spent thirty dollars and ninety-six cents on nine-volt batteries.
They did.
Yeah.
It's very detailed.
And those probably didn't find their way into remote controls in somebody's living room, but, you know, that's part of that too, and that's entrusting your department directors, and your folks that work for your city, and being, um, not only good stewards of the monies, but also honest.
Right, and that, actually, it was that report, that, here a few years ago, that I, you know, that, uh, Councilman Man just mentioned, about the twenty-dollar headlight, as to that, you know, it went to a, a car that we didn't have in inventory.
But it could be perceived, though, as we continue on with this conversation, could be perceived that we, as a council, do not have the faith in the folks who have been entrusted, in trust, to carry on the city's business. And, and that's problematic, not only for us as council members, answering to the citizens for whom we represent, but it's also troubling for the citizens, for us to continue to call the question, and, and I've sat through, I think, four meetings now, I had a little checkmark, uh, four meetings where this has come to bear, and I'm looking at these expenditure reports, and I'm, I'm, they're surprisingly detailed.
We met, remember, six months ago, we sat and met with Jackie on a regular basis, and going through everything, and I thought we were satisfied, and if you remember correctly, the attorney fees came up, and we reviewed them and looked at them, and Jackie made us aware that things would start changing, and she would use him as on, as when it was appropriate, and when we needed him here. And she has been very diligent about watching that. I don't feel that we need to review the attorney bills anymore. I, I trust Jackie, and I know that she's gonna stay on track.
Wow.
So we're, was that still not good enough, when we were meeting?
It wasn't, it, it, the future, what I'd like to see is the last year in the past.
Well, but is it, but is it gonna change anything?
Well, obviously, you've looked at some, because you guys sat down together, so-
Oh, we didn't, no, we didn't look at anything in the, over the past.
Well, I, yeah, yeah, we did, we, we reviewed, we had the bills, and then we also met with David, if you remember correctly, and we went through-
They were just totals, they weren't-
You weren't, you want the details, you want the, the, okay. Well, I don't think that we can-
Well, just drop it.
I don't think that we should tie our hands, or each other's hands, from having access to information that any of us should have available to us. I don't think it's fair that we single one counselor out and say, we can look at it, but you can't. I don't think that's fair, and I don't think that's why the citizens voted for us. But, I also don't want staff to be bogged down because of somebody demanding detail like that. So if there's a way, again, to assure me that you are not, or any of us are not gonna take all of staff's time doing forensic auditing, then I'll, then I'm comfortable with that. But I don't see that happening, I think it's gonna be a time suck for staff.
I envisioned where, I, let's say, asked for, uh, September's, um, or last month's bill. Uh, it's less, it's about maybe this size or less, that I've gotten in the past, and you sit, you know, pull out the file, sit down in the conference room, that's what I envisioned. I don't know if that's what would happen, so I, you know, that's what I envisioned. Where no copies are made, uh, and, you know, I'm assuming that we've got a, you know, hard copy, or like, or look at it on a, on a screen, whatever work, you know, works, that's what I envisioned.
Okay.
I figure, just given the subject matter, I'd weigh in. You know, on the point of, of access to those things, whether it's our office's bill, whether it's other professional services that, that bill you, clearly, who has access to those, on the council, and how often, and that's really a policy question for all of you, uh, which you're, you're obviously having a robust discussion about.
Yes, we are.
Um, the, the, the issue that I would have, I mean, from my point of view, in terms of the, the role that we have as city attorney is, however that plays out, uh, in terms of looking at it, is, is a recognition, and I don't know that this was always clear in the past, but I, I feel, I think everybody realizes that now. Even though it may be, you know, billing, and we do try to do a fairly detailed job of, you know, what we do, why we're billing, how much time, most of that is, 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 is privileged information. I mean, that, that's a privilege that you all can waive, right? And so I'm not saying that by, by no means can that ever be shared, but that's true of any lawyer representing any client, public or private, that, that writing of what we've done is, is, is technically covered by the attorney-client privilege. So, it, it's, to me, it's less about who can look at it, who can access it, and, and, and having an assurance that if and when that happens amongst any of you, that it, it isn't something that is, um, released without at least a majority of you consenting to its release.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I think in the past, some of the concern that the council had was maybe the method in which those bills were being reviewed, um, it allowed for a lot of potential transmission. Um, and, you know, maybe nine times out of ten, that's not a big deal, it probably isn't. But it could be, and, and it's my job to tell you when I think, you know, you just wanna be considering how you go about allowing for that review. I don't think the review at all is a, is a, in my opinion, a problem. With particularity to, you know, a lawyer's bill, it's just a matter of making sure that the privilege isn't waived unless four of you decide that that's the right thing to do. That's my, that's my piece on it.
So is this something we can mull over, or do we wanna come to a conclusion tonight? Now, Counselor Tracy's wanting to say something.
I guess the question is, what's the, uh, what's the end result of somebody waiving that privilege without the consent of the council? What happens if that information is shared, and it goes, I mean, the attorney-client privilege, as you just stated, David, is between the seven of us, holistic, and you. Um, what happens if somebody does take that information outside of, you know, and waives the privilege?
So, it, there's an open debate about whether the privilege is, is, is technically waived in that case. The problem is, you, you know, you really can't put the genie back in the bottle.
Right.
And so it makes it a much more open question as to whatever the issue might be, now that a piece of that information was made public, um, would somebody have the right to claim that there is no privilege left with respect to the rest of the information?
Thank you.
I don't think your, your concern is that you wanna get this information released to the public, you just wanna be able to see it, and ask the questions of staff related to what you find. Right? Okay, so that comes back to how much staff time is gonna be spent on getting this information for you, and then doing all of this research to answer the questions. So I think we need to come up with, I guess, a process or something, that makes it fair, open, transparent, and equitable for staff.
Mayor?
Yes.
When I heard this discussed before, I think prior to when I was on the council, it was sometimes described as a, a council rule, that I believe it was the council president who was the one who could review the legal bills in more detail.
The mayor and the council president.
Mayor and council president, okay. Um, I don't recall that being specifically in the rules that we reviewed, uh, for future adoption last month. It was more like a, a one-time decision that was made-
Yes.
-as the issue was raised.
Yes.
But I think that as long as we have vision, uh, and precedent for having some identified members of the council having access to those bills, then I think if an individual council member wants that access, they need to lobby to be in one of those positions that we have, have set forth as, as being given that access, rather than maybe to change the rule.
I, yeah, that's good, I just don't feel comfortable limiting, having just a few council members have access to that information, not the rest of us, but-
Well, I would imagine that the, the two that have access to it, uh, would, would want it, would, would seek the same transparency that Counselor Reisner seems to want, and that if there were any issues that came up where they were concerned, they would then wanna bring it to the rest of the council, which I think is what Counselor Reisner would wanna do too. Bring it to us in an appropriate way that preserved privilege and everything else. But it's, it's not that, that there's no access by council members to these rules, it's just that we have identified the people on the council to whom that access is going to be given, uh, rather than have it being open, and I think partly for that reason of wanting to eliminate, to, to reduce the number of people who could potentially reach out and ask this question, and then use the staff time. And, and I'm, I'm happy with it remaining the way it is now, uh, and, uh, but I, but I understand the need to, uh, to want to see and be sure that money is spent the way we think it's being spent. I think that's, that's an admirable, and, uh, you know, uh, something we would want council members to be, to do. But we've identified, the past, the council in the past has identified a means of doing that, and I'm happy to, to stick with that.
Suggestion, if I may?
Yes.
So the, the big question, at least for you, is, you know, the, the use of staff time.
Yes.
Which is a big question, we don't know.
Yes.
So, why couldn't we, uh, give it like a month or two-month trial period? If, you know, and keep track, if it's extensive time, then we put an end to it. If it's, if it's minimal, then we, uh-
So like an exceedance threshold?
Yes.
Sure.
An hour, or a month, that's all you get.
Well, I think that's too much, but, okay.
Oh, perfect, you get fifteen minutes.
Well, again, I have to agree with Counselor Tracy, in that I think you are, you are showing to the staff and employees of the city that you don't trust them, so I will be against whatever you want to do. I think the bills that we are getting, the accounting we are getting, is very good. If we don't trust them, let's just, let's be upfront, we don't trust the city staff, and then let's move forward, if that's how we're gonna go.
I agree.
Well, it's, um, has nothing to do with, with trust, it's accountability. Uh, I, um, was, uh, I wrote a, a paper back a few years ago, where, um, a, a group of churches went to Mexico, um, on, on mission trips, it was like twenty, and those churches finally came together to form a group, and I end up using that trip as a senior project, and, um, one caveat that, um, one of the ministers didn't agree with, was that there was no accountability for, for how the money was spent, which I raised, and this was in the ministry. And, um, so it, it's not that I don't, don't trust staff, I do. But at the same time, um, the business manager from Estacada Fire Department was trusted too, until she ran off with like a hundred- was trusted too until she ran off with like $100,000. The finance director over at West Lynn, until she did 1.3 million.
All right, yes, there's been lots of examples, but basically what we need is a gatekeeper. We need somebody that can say, "Okay, folks, you're spending way too much time asking questions and going through documents."
Yeah, I think we ought to leave that to our city administrator, Jackie, to, if you want to test, let her do her job and see if there's a problem. If councillors feel there's a problem, then we do something else. But I believe we need to just proceed the way we're going now.
Well, rest of the council, what would you like to do?
I'm happy the way it is. Not change anything.
Okay, so the way it is right now is all of the review of, not all of the bills, but the professional services bills? Or is it none of the bills, other than what's in here, can be reviewed by everybody? What's in here is reviewed by everybody. Anything beyond this more specific goes through, what, the mayor and the council president right now?
Perfect.
That's the way it is. No, I'm just clarifying, that's how it is right now. So if anybody had any questions for more detail, then Linda and I would be the gatekeepers.
I'd be all right with that if you and Linda were the gatekeepers prior to going to staff. You could be the one that said, "No, this is ridiculous. We're not going to look at it."
Okay.
I'd be all right with that.
Okay, so then the mayor and the council president will be the gatekeepers.
And I also think that as you get your council packets and go through these, we ask for questions ahead of time. And if you have questions about expenditures, then we can get that for the council meeting, so everybody knows about it.
Right.
So it's not just one person. And we've always welcomed that type of questions or feedback if there's any questions regarding how money's being spent.
Okay, so then if more detail, you go through Linda or myself, so that we can monitor how much time staff is spending on doing research and answering questions.
But councillor McMahon doesn't want me to do that. Because that's what I did back, you know, three, four years ago. I didn't do it in an open session. I sent an email. But I've been, you know, chastised for it for about four years.
Okay, well, now it's going through us.
Well, the attorney bills are not subject to that. Those are privileged documents, and that's what councillor Reisner's talking about.
The bills?
Yes.
Well, not the, maybe not the amount, and that's what's been reported, but the actual entries about what was done certainly is subject to the privilege. It's, like I said, it has to do for me with making sure that however it's reviewed, whether it's all seven of you, two of you, that's for the council to make a decision on. I don't want to be in a position where there's been something where I've been accused of saying, "Oh yeah, that privilege is waived. That's a decision my client makes." And in public settings, that's four of the seven of you, at least in this council.
Again, I just want to make sure that staff time isn't spent answering a ton of questions all the time. So, do we need to do the gatekeeper thing? But you can still have access to information, but you just need to temper it a little bit?
Is there some stuff in here, is there a specific right now that you can think of that you are interested in? Can you give me an example out of here, what you're looking for? I mean, this is vague. I want to look at everything.
Regarding the attorney bills?
Anything.
Well, the turn, so, no, because I didn't anticipate your question, but I'll be glad to come out back with.
If you'd be glad to.
So next.
We'll try to figure out if he wants to have a thing.
And see, I'm all right with you, and I think that's fine that we ask Jackie, and I've asked myself once or twice if I had a question on something of like, what is CEIS, or something that I wasn't up to date with. That's great, but I just don't want to spend a lot of time, city staff time, or light bulbs, or fueling gas, or...
I don't either. They've got better things to do. That's why I say, you know, is to hand them... You know, I do too.
The appearance is you don't.
So, well, that's your opinion.
And mine.
Okay. So, it's accountability.
Is there a process in place? Did I hear that right with councillor Milch? There is a process in place?
Yes, right now it's where the mayor and the council president have access to everything.
So any of us could come to either the mayor or the council president with concerns and get the information, most likely, because you're both reasonable people?
Yes.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Do we need to make, do we need to make a motion, or just consensus?
It doesn't sound like anything's really changing.
No, we have a process in place, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'm good with the process.
All right. We'll work through it.
For sure.
Okay. All right, so that was item number 14. The next item is business carried forward.
So, what I want to talk to you about is...
You were close with me.
No, it's your turn. Color-coded.
This is an administrative decision, but I wanted to make sure the council is aware of what I've decided to do in regards to staffing positions in administration. The past six months, I have kept the assistant city administrator position vacant. And I have brought in a temporary executive assistant, which is Haley Crapp. She's been working here on a temporary basis. And then we also elevated the duties of Tammy Bannick, and she's been doing an excellent job. And I've brought in a retired human resources director that's been doing contract work for us. And it's been working beautifully for the last six months. And I've been able to see what pieces of the assistant city administrator position that I need to have in certain positions. And I don't want to fill the assistant city administrator position, and because it's a department head position, I want to make sure you're aware of that, that what I'd like to do, in your packet you have a position called an office assistant. And that office assistant would be a represented employee that would be in administration office. And they would be working in room 103. That's where Elizabeth is at and Susan is at. And it would be doing a lot of the essential customer service newsletter. They would help with utility billing, and a lot of the functions that Haley has been doing right now. I would like to make that a permanent position. And I have to tell you that we are very fortunate. Haley has worked for us for the last seven years in the Parks and Recreation Department. She's done a phenomenal job. And I would like to offer her a letter before I go on vacation tomorrow to make her a permanent office assistant with the city of Gladstone. She's homegrown here. She's worked very hard. And I'm very proud of the work that she is doing for us, and I think that you all concur the last six months. My intent is to extend her a letter of permanent position for the office assistant. The other position that I'm equally, if not more excited about, is the fact that Tammy Bannick has such institutional knowledge here in Gladstone for 30-plus years. And this position is really tailored for her. And that's rare in government, because usually you post a position and you recruit for it. But the past six months, we've let Tammy look at the different functions that she likes at city hall, whether it's human resources, being the city recorder, helping out with the committees, the resolutions, the packets. She does it all, and she never complains. And so, the most important position, I think, in any city government is to have a city recorder. In fact, your charter states that you should have one, but that's always fallen to the assistant city administrator. So if I am not here any longer, Tammy would still be here. And I think it's very, the most important position here. And I'm very excited. I'm proud of the work that she's done. And so I look at this as a very good promotion for her, that she is going to become the city's recorder. She will handle the elections and a lot of the work that she's doing. She will help oversight with the office assistant position. And I just want to say thank you, Tammy, because you're doing a really good job for the city.
Yeah, for sure.
So the other piece of that, then, is I'm going to continue to monitor the HR responsibilities and keep Nancy on a temporary basis, on a contract basis. We don't pay benefits. It's an hourly wage. She's going to continue to help us clean up some of our practices and policies, do some salary compensations. Human resources has been neglected somewhat in the past years. So she's also going to assess what type of human resource position we will need on a permanent basis, but I'm going to give that time. And so, for me, not to fill the assistant city administrator position, but yet to split it into these three components is what I will be doing.
Awesome. Did you ever ask Tammy if she wanted to do this?
We did ask her many times.
Okay, good. And you did say yes? We just want that on record?
I did say yes.
Okay, good. All right. Okay?
Thank you.
Any questions? Nope? All right, so next, I thought we weren't doing business from the audience at the end. Do we have somebody? We do have one, okay, because I was just going to do it in the beginning and then at different, at the agenda items. But, okay, business from the audience. Joshua Gore.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak, as it was not planned. But a conversation came up about financial records being available to all council members. And I felt very passionate about it, because I work in financial services. So transparency is what we have not done well in the past, but are attempting to do well in the future. And so it's very, I'm very passionate about transparency. And so if there is a member of the council who is an elected official who is requesting past, present, or future records, it seems almost immature to not allow them that access, because the entire population of Gladstone doesn't get to have the same trust in the representatives that you hire. Now, we have the trust in you, as elected officials, to pick people of, I guess, the word escapes me, but pick people who are going to do the job well and are going to do it honestly. But at the same time, it doesn't mean that accountability is not important. And that just simply looking them over periodically, both past, present, and future, is not important. So when I hear a number of council members, and I haven't been in the city long. I own a home in Gladstone, but I own a few other homes as well outside of Gladstone. And so I like to visit. This is my first visit here. It's been good. It's been well-run, and I appreciate the work that you guys do in my short time in Gladstone. It does seem like if one person speaks up, that's generally going to be the person that finds something. It's not going to be the people who didn't speak up. And so, it almost seems like as a taxpaying citizen, when I hear that it's kind of status quo, that's generally the problem. Now, the status quo could be great. It sounds like the financial records, I haven't viewed them, but as councillor Tracy said, it seems very good. He seems like he's seen a lot of these. It seems like they're very detailed. And I have faith that you guys have picked the right people for the job. But if one person does feel like that time is not wasted just making sure that it is done well, that that person should be allowed, no matter who it is. I don't know councillor Reisner's record, or if he's constantly doing this. But I can tell you that generally that one person who raises their hand either has something to bring forth, or may in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Joshua, can I ask you a question, or make a comment on what your statement was? And I appreciate it. I think it's very telling and it's very clear. And I would say to you, I believe that the seven folks that are sitting up here on the dais are concerned about the finances of the city. But this conversation evolves out of a light bulb conversation that happened a long time ago. And it was before my time as well. I do agree with you that it is the one person that may find something. But I think that part of what we're struggling here with, struggling with here is that there's been so much distrust in the past. And councillor Reiser, to his credit, I mean, was talking about specific individuals. We're going to have to put together a process. And I guess my feeling about the process is, not that I don't want to know, not that I don't want to see, not that I wouldn't want to pursue in propriety or anything of that nature, but that I have to have enough confidence in the two individuals that through a process that was agreed upon by the council will be somewhat of a gatekeeper to that information, so that the city can continue to function, we can continue to hold trust in our, not only our elected officials as citizens, but also in our department heads, and so that councillor Reisner can get the information that he so desires to seek in a process that's already been agreed upon. And so I think what we're trying to do is support that process. But I, by no means, I wrote down what you said, I agree with you wholeheartedly on that, on your statement. And I appreciate you coming up, and you did look impassioned when we were having the robust conversation. So thank you very much for doing so, and I appreciate you coming to our community.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate it. And don't let my words think that I don't think that each and every one of you care. As an elected official, I would expect that you do care very passionately. Generally, my fear came from the fact that sometimes gatekeepers can be just gates. And so since I don't know each and every one of you personally, I plan on hopefully knowing you all in the future as a homeowner in your guys' community, and you guys are my elected officials in that community. That is my fear. And I just wanted to bring it to light, that that can be seen as a wall instead of an actual gate.
There are more, probably more allies between us up here than... My experience in the community is only two years old now, coming up on two years. When I first was introduced to this council, I don't think that there was a type of symbiote and synergy that is now on this council. So I appreciate that very much, because that could be the case. But I think there's plenty of us up here that would keep others in check.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have another one?
Can I add real quickly too, and this is just a thought, is experience in another community I worked on the audit committee. They had three citizens and one elected official. It could be that you want to consider amending the makeup of that committee to include councillor Reisner to be on the audit committee, if that would suffice that request.
That's an excellent suggestion.
That's perfect. That makes it simple. Guess what? So, can we vote on that now, or do we need to wait till the next meeting? We'll bring that up in January. How's that? We're going to have a vote. We'll put it on the agenda. Yeah. All right, Neil. You asked for it. All right, so anything else from business from the audience? No. All right, so then we have business from the council. Who would like to start? Councillor Merce Row.
Okay, went to a, on the first Wednesday of this month, I went to the fire zone, the fire station meeting, pardon me, and got a chance to review the same thing we reviewed again tonight on the community risk assessment. Think they've done a good job on that. I also, this Monday, was the, I can say that this time, I was the only councillor there. But there was only three people that were asking me questions, so it was pretty much fair from past experience. But the two questions were talked about. One was talked about here again tonight regarding the Class C misdemeanor question. And then the other question was the concern by these individuals that the revitalization report was a bit confusing and not necessarily exacting to their questions. And tried to explain that we're really in the infancy of this whole thing, even though it's been going on for some time, and there's a lot more to go. And if there's... And, uh, if there's questions, then, uh, the city citizens can ask those questions. And when we come up with the, uh, proposal in the end, uh, so be it, so. That's all for me.
All right, Councilor McMahon.
Uh, just, uh, let, let you know that the fire department still is doing some fundraising and stuff for their annual drive, which is this Saturday, I believe, and also the police department and fire department. You can leave your packages or have them sent to the police department. Probably wouldn't want anything that a dog would sniff out, per se, but, uh, anything else you could have dropped off at the, at the police department for Christmas time, so it doesn't get borrowed off your front porch, so.
So when, they're gonna need people to deliver the toys and the food?
I doubt it, but I don't know that for a fact. They usually have enough, you would know.
Well, last year, we had...
What does your source say?
We put it out on Nextdoor Gladstone, and I think we had maybe 40 cars of people show up. So, I'll, I'll make sure the fire department puts it out again, because that was, that was great. But I just wasn't sure what time or day it was.
Uh, I do believe it's this Saturday.
This Saturday?
It's probably like 8:30 or 9 o'clock.
Okay. I'll find out, and I'll get it on Nextdoor Gladstone. All right, Councilor Reisner.
I heard from Santa that, uh, at the tree lighting week before last, missed, uh, the fact that we didn't have snow like we did last year.
Yes.
But it had a blast. And, uh, we'll see what happens, uh, next year. So, uh, I wanted to thank all of those that, uh, stepped up, wanted to be on committees, and got appointed, thank you. Uh, really look forward to your involvement, and, uh, and also other activities that a lot of you volunteers here, and also in the city with, you know, the nature park, Celebrate Gladstone. Uh, for my, my colleagues, uh, yesterday was the, the last coffee with the counselor for this, this year, and, um, Councilman Neese and I, uh, we're gonna get together in the last couple of days, but our schedules just didn't mesh. So, we're, we're talking about, uh, we've, we have preliminary talked about maybe tweaking it some, but, uh, and making some, not, and making those, I mean, obviously, we have to make the decisions, you know, all of us, because we're all participating. Uh, but, uh, so what my, my thought was to, um, maybe, uh, send out, uh, a sign-up for, uh, January, February, maybe March, to at least, you know, so we, we keep, keep things going. It, it's an awesome outreach to, uh, to the citizens, so.
And then tweak it, come up with a plan.
Right. So, so I'll, I'll get that out to you, uh, either tonight or, you know, the next day or two, to start, uh, the, what would that be? Looks like the 8th and the 22nd, uh, for, for January, and the 5th and then, I don't know, maybe, looks like it's a holiday on the 19th, so we'll, we'll work it out.
Perfect.
And, uh, I wanted to wish everybody a happy new year, and, uh, Merry Christmas, and thank you for sticking around the last couple of hours with us. Appreciate it.
Councilor Tracy?
Just want to wish everybody happy holidays, and remind, I have said this, I think, one other time, um, you know, if, uh, I monitor the social media in the town, I just want to try to encourage people to lift each other up and, and not be tearing each other down. There's a lot of tearing down in this town, and I don't understand it. Um, frankly, I think we all have different ideals, maybe, um, but the betterment of the city and the vitality of the city, and treating our neighbors with respect, I think, should be kind of first and foremost, especially in the holiday season. And, um, I don't know, there's a lot of white noise, it just, it seems to me like there's folks with the same ideas, ideals, et cetera, et cetera, but they, they can't help but go after each other, and it's just, it's disheartening. So, I'll just keep harping on that until we, we all kind of lifting each other up.
Councilor Neese?
Rotary, um, did their Christmas party this last week, and we also collected, uh, items to give to the children's, um, family center here in town, as well as adoptive family, and we got lots of, of scarves, and hats, and gloves, and cozy blankets, and gave, and, uh, we got quite a bit that we have given away. And then Kiwanis held their breakfast this past Saturday, and I don't know how many of you got to attend, but I hope you did. And, um, and like Matt Tracy said, I wish all of you a Merry Christmas.
Councilor Milch?
I continue, my wife and I continue to take our 16-month-old grandson to every library storytime opportunity we have, especially in this community, which we found to be our favorite, because, uh, particularly the one on Wednesdays, there are a group of about four little boys, all around the same age, who have become, uh, tight friends, and, and I don't know if you know this, but the, uh, you know, the amount of vocabulary that a number of words in a child's vocabulary by the time they're two years, two years old, is a very strong indicator of how well-prepared they're going to be to enter kindergarten. And how well they are prepared to enter kindergarten is a strong indicator of whether or not they will be reading by the third grade. And whether or not a child has learned to read by the third grade is a very strong indicator of whether they will graduate from high school. And whether or not they graduate from high school is a very strong indicator of whether they will end up in jail, or have a job as an adult. And people who manage to stay out of jail and get a job are far more likely to raise children who have a strong vocabulary by the time they're two years old. Uh, and all of that is my way of saying, the library is a very important institution in our community, we need to support it. We have a ballot measure coming up in May. Uh, there's some very strict rules, which I learned in a meeting we had just last week with members of the, um, Friends of the Gladstone Nature Park Group, who coincidentally, also all, almost universally, all happen to be very, very strong library supporters. There are some, some strict rules about what city staff and elected officials can do, uh, in promoting an election. And I'm still trying to learn those rules, and we'll need some good guidance on that. But I have gone out and purchased a book, um, I read recently that the president of Amazon recently surpassed Bill Gates as being the richest person in the world, and my wife is convinced it's because of the books that I buy. But I bought this one for $57, Winning Elections and Influencing Politicians for Library Funding.
You don't know where Michael sits on that fence there at all.
It's written by a couple of people who founded the first political action committee devoted strictly to supporting library funding measures across the country. Uh, and doing it legally, and doing it properly, and doing it using all the science there is about who is likely to support a library measure and who isn't. So you will be hearing from me in one way or another, uh, on, uh, on how we can go about getting this library measure passed, and, uh, and our legal staff is already working on what the wording of it will be. Uh, but, uh, I feel it's very important in this community that we do this, and, uh, so it's gonna be a good first, first five months of the year, working on that together.
Wonderful. Well, I just want to say, as Councilor Reisner said, the holiday tree lighting was awesome. Thank you so much for supporting that event. It just made me realize even more that our community wants events like that throughout the year. So more will be coming. Next year, I think we're gonna have a parade too. Santa was wonderful. And Happy Rock for bringing gourmet coffees and cocos, and it was, it just was wonderful. And I've seen so many people taking their family pictures in front of our wonderful small tree, because it will grow, it'll be awesome. And thank you to Councilor Milch's wonderful grandson, Austin, who took this on as his Eagle Scout project. There's more coming on that one, so. And the Pootabah family for letting us, um, revamp their memorial. Um, this past weekend, I had the opportunity to drop in on Shop with a Cop at Walmart on 82nd, and I have to say, when I first dropped, stopped, and Gladstone was the only one not there, I was a little sad, I guess. But then I was so proud to find out that the reason they weren't there is because they took all of our kids out for breakfast first. So, they came by, and there were so many police officers and sheriffs and children, it was just, it was amazing. It was a great experience. Um, and then the Toy and Food Drive, that's coming up this weekend. So I'll get the notice out on Nextdoor Gladstone of where and when, for people that want to deliver. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, that's all I have. Thank you. Someone like to make a motion?
A move that we adjourn.
Motion was made by Councilor Reisner, seconded by Councilor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 9:14 PM.